Did you make sure it just came up live for me, do I have to roll for you? Did you make sure it just came up live for me, do I have to roll?
Come on, we're ready.
Yep, we're ready.
Okay, Chairman, we're in time.
Okay, we'll call this meeting of the Ainsworth City Planting Order. It's 5:44, Neil, I've got the one Daniel number nine, 2020. Um, turn up with the roll call, please.
Fine. I'm here. Hi, my name is Ericson. Ericson, hi. Peterson.
Peterson here.
Peterson, hi. Healy.
Healy, hi.
Healy, hi. Winandy.
We're in here.
Winandy here. Our eyes, excuse me. Mooney.
Mooney, hi.
Mooney, hi. City Commission, we need Tom Zarba.
Zarba here.
Uh, I'm ETJ member Welch. ETJ member Welch. Okay, then, um, Chairman here.
Here, hi.
Here, hi.
Okay, that is a quorum.
A quorum for the meeting.
We'll go to the next item.
We'll go to the next item, which is consideration of the October 12th, 2020 meeting minutes.
Included with your information packet. Any changes or adjustments? Or is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Peterson's all moved.
Final second.
Give me a second. I believe we have a motion, a second, to approve the October 12th, 2020 meeting minutes. Roll call, please.
Sir, can I please just get clarification as to who made the motion?
Motion by Peterson, second by sign.
Got it, thank you very much. Okay, back to roll call. Ericson. Ericson, hi. Peterson.
Peterson, hi.
Peterson, hi. Healy.
Healy, hi.
Healy, hi. Winandy.
Winandy, hi.
Winandy, hi. Mooney.
Mooney, hi.
Mooney, hi. And Pierre.
Pierre, hi.
Pierre, hi.
If that motion is passed, those, uh, October 12th, 2020 meeting minutes are adopted. Do we have, uh, any public appearances to deal with tonight?
I don't see anybody on YouTube. Um, Duane, could you ask those in the audience if they're here for any item other than what's on the agenda?
We have no one appearing on an item not on the agenda.
Chairman Pierre, you went back on mute.
I didn't catch all that.
There's nobody here, uh, to speak on an item not on the agenda, and then you were on mute when you just started into discussion, but now you're live again, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so for those people that are here for items on the agenda, we will recognize you when that agenda item comes up and we'll ask you to identify yourself before speaking on that particular item. Moving on, there are no consent items, uh, we'll move on to the old business item, which is this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider a conditional use permit for a self-storage facility in a B2 highway business district on Lot 1 and the north 113 and a half feet of Lot 3, Outlet C, the Moderegger Outlets, and the east 370 feet of Lot 10 of Tucker's Third Edition. And parcel B in the northwest quarter of Section 17, Township 93 North, Range 55 West. As measured on the line dividing said two parcels, all being in the city and county of Yankton, South Dakota. Joseph and Roberta Kleinschmidt owners, the address being the west side of the 1,000 block of Furtig Avenue. You have a summary and a description from staff in your information packet. Does staff have anything more to add to this, uh, use request?
I would just, uh, add that the only comments we received were a part of the prior rezoning that led to this discussion. I have not received any comments from the neighbors subsequent to a public notice for the conditional use, uh, permit. And I would say that if an action is taken on this item, um, that we reference in our action that it's contingent upon, of course, all the prerequisite city commission action, because they won't be through the formalities of having, um, the ordinance change prior to, uh, recommendation from this body, but based on all of that, um, staff recommends approval of the proposed conditional use permit request.
Are there any comments or questions by the commission on this conditional use permit? So, hearing none, as, uh, is there any comment by anyone present in the commission room or on YouTube?
There are no comments on YouTube at this time.
We have no one appearing in the meeting room on this item.
Okay. Uh, I believe we need a motion, and if it's a motion to approve conditioned upon the action by the city commission regarding the the zoning reclassification. Entertain a motion.
Winandy would make the motion to approve the conditional use request subject to the city commission's approval of the zoning.
Okay, we have a motion by Bradman, a second by Warren Erickson to approve the conditional use permit request. Uh, roll call, please.
Peterson.
Peterson, hi.
Peterson, hi. Healy.
Hi, Healy, hi.
Healy, hi. Winandy.
Winandy, hi.
Winandy, hi. Mooney.
Mooney, hi.
Mooney, hi. Syme.
Syme, hi.
Syme, hi. Erickson. Erickson, hi. And Pierre.
Pierre, hi.
Pierre, hi.
Okay, that, uh, motion is passed, and, um, city commission will consider a resolution and make the final decision later this evening. Okay. For a variance from the city's sign ordinance on a B2 highway business district for the placement of two banners in locations not permitted by the ordinance on Block 2 of Kmart Edition in the city of Yankton at 2320 Broadway Avenue. Unclaimed Freight Furniture is the occupant. William Hinks and Tamara Wallenstein owners. And you have in your information packet the summary of the request and the location map, the application. Guess the request from Unclaimed Freight letter from Peggy Olson, Slumberland Furniture, and Ken Kapetsky, Kapetsky's H Hardware. Dave, go ahead and comment upon this and probably summarize a little history of the sign ordinance for us.
Sure, maybe that would be the best place to start. Um, in 2013, our sign ordinance, um, as some of you on the planning commission may remember, went through a process where we, uh, with the planning commission, with the city commission, and through a series of public meetings, adopted, uh, uh, pretty much a total rewrite, uh, to our sign code. A number of the things in the sign code, uh, made it easier for businesses to do things without requiring a permit, even though in, in many of those instances, um, the signs were still regulated, but there was no need for them to come to City Hall to get a permit or, or get a permit online. In other instances, uh, some of the sign size requirements changed. Um, we further defined things that were new, uh, as far as uh, types of signs that weren't recognized by the prior ordinance. The request we see here this evening, um, is one of those. It's a feather sign or a whip sign, um, and in our rewrite, we, those were classified, uh, as banners, so banners, feather signs, whip signs, streamers, uh, ended up with the same definition or classification. Uh, the decision at the time, because the prior ordinance required permits for all of those temporary permits, but the decision at the time was, rather than put business owners through a continual those types of things, let's just make them, um, allowed without a permit requirement as long as their location was regulated. Um, so then we went through with that visual preference survey and determined appropriate locations, and it was, uh, decided in the ordinance that that location would be uh, on the building, which would be the principal permitted structure, or within two feet of the principal permitted structure. And that ordinance was, um, again, through public process, adopted and, and approved. Um, so that's where we sit today with the ordinance. Um, so there's two ways for a sign such as, uh, being proposed, uh, in this instance, uh, to end up being placed, um, as proposed. One of them would be a rewrite of the ordinance, and if that were to happen, um, which isn't the recommendation at this time, but if that were to happen, um, it would seem prudent that we would go through another full review of, of the code and not, um, just start an ordinance rewrite for one specific type of sign. That is not a staff recommendation, what, by the way, to begin that, uh, because it was, uh, pretty clear from our, our process in 2013 what the, what the community was, was looking for. The other way that that could be allowed at this location is through the variance request, which is what the owner has, has followed through and formally submitted. Um, as you know, uh, to be eligible to receive a variance, there, there's two criteria or two parts of code that need to be addressed or looked at. One of them is actually South Dakota codified law, which is over and above what, what we regulate at the city, and that is specific to defining a variance. And that section of codified law says, "The board shall be satisfied by the evidence heard before it that the granting of any variance permitted will alleviate a hardship approaching confiscation as distinguished, as distinguished from special privileges sought by the owner." Um, and the other part of, uh, the, the what needs to be considered is what is written in, in city law or city code, um, which also references much of the same language, and it discusses a hardship that constitutes an unreasonable deprivation of use as distinguished from uh, the granting of a special, special privilege. We've received a couple of comments, as Commissioner, or Chairman Pierre referenced. We received a comment from Larry and Peggy Olson entered into the record that supports the current sign ordinance and hopes that individual variances are not granted. Uh, we also received a, a written comment from Leo Kapetsky, the owner of the property of the north, that supports this applicant's variance request and, um, stated that they would like a variance also. Um, I instructed them of the process that, that would be necessary for them to request a variance. Based on everything that we have before us, um, there's no documentable hardship that meet, um, South Dakota codified law definitions or city code definitions, so staff would recommend, uh, denial of the proposed variance request. And as mentioned at the beginning, if, if there was consideration that something needed to change, although it's not recommended, we would suggest that, uh, ordinance review will be looked at rather than considering things on a location-by-location basis. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
Are there any questions from members of the commission?
Uh, yes, I do have a question. Um, with this, uh, the limit of two feet from the building for these types of temporary banners or signs, does this mean that businesses that are much closer to the road could have a banner of this type within two feet of the building, but it'd be very close to the road as well, whereas these businesses like Unclaimed Freight along Broadway there, uh, have a significant difference in how far they are from the road?
That's a very good question. Um, so the, the setback in that, in that district is 15 feet, and it has been, uh, since prior to any of these structures that we're talking about, uh, having been constructed. So at the time of development, uh, whoever built the original project had the choice of having their principal permitted structure at the 15-foot front yard setback mark, or they could set their building back some distance further than that and then have parking in that front yard setback, because that setback also applies to parking areas. Um, so in this instance, the original, uh, developer of this, this structure, which wasn't Unclaimed Freight, by the way, um, chose to have their parking out front at that 15-foot setback and set the building back. So yes, other businesses that have made a different choice in that regard um, have set, um, their buildings closer to the right of way, in other words, maybe even at that 15-foot front yard setback, so they would be permitted to have, uh, a banner on the side of their building or within two feet of their building, um, because that was a choice that was made through the development of that property.
Thank you. I also have one more question, and that is, um, there's a lot of other types of signage that would be an option for this business, aren't there?
You know, we try and let the, the marketplace, uh, decide, make those decisions, but yeah, there, there are types of, of, other types of signage. This location specifically is, is maxed out on its allowable sign area for permitted types of sign beyond um, what would be something like a banner up next to the building. So as far as permanent signage, uh, this location is, is maxed out with what they have. If you look at their property, our, our sign maximums are based on frontage, and this property is pretty linear. It's kind of a narrow piece of property that's pretty deep going to the east, and so that Broadway frontage dimension is what actually determines, um, the permissible sign area on, on that location. And, and we've worked with the applicant through the years when they've made some changes. You might remember there was an alternate, a different business in the southern port, part of this uh, facility at one point in time, and then it transitioned and and was incorporated into, into the Unclaimed Freight Store where the, the Lazy Boy sign is now, and we had that discussions, and they received the appropriate permitting for that sign at that time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, other questions or comments, um, anybody on the commission? Okay, hearing none, is there any comment from anyone in the commission room or on YouTube?
There are no comments on YouTube. I do see somebody in the commission room.
If, if you have a comment on this item, I'd ask you to step to the, some of the podium set up with a microphone and identify yourself, and you can go ahead and give your, uh, comments.
We have no comments in the meeting room.
There are no comments in the meeting room, Chairman Pierre.
Okay, I missed that. Thank you. What about YouTube?
There are no YouTube comments on this item.
Is there a motion regarding this request for a variance from, uh, Unclaimed Freight?
Peterson moved to deny.
Winandy, second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Peterson, Commissioner Winandy to deny the request for variance on Unclaimed Freight regarding a, a sign ordinance. We'll have a roll call, please.
Healy.
Healy, hi.
Healy, hi. Winandy.
Winandy, hi.
Winandy, hi. Mooney.
Mooney, hi.
Mooney, hi. Syme.
Syme, hi.
Syme, hi. Erickson. Erickson, hi. Peterson.
Peterson, hi.
Peterson, hi. And Pierre.
Pierre, hi.
Pierre, hi.
Okay, that motion to deny the variance request is passed. Um, this will be heard by the zoning board of adjustment, but let me restate that. November 23rd, 2020, the zoning board of adjustment sets December 14th, 2020 is the date for a public hearing to consider the variance, and then the zoning board of adjustment will meet on December 14th, 2020 to make the final decision. So moving on to action item number two, it's a plat review of a replat of Block 69, Lower Yankton, including the vacated North-South Alley lying within said Block 69, and including parcel A of Block 69, Lower Yankton, and including parcel B of Block 69, Lower Yankton, all in the city and county of Yankton, South Dakota. Hereafter to be known as St. Joe's Corner and lots RL1, RL2, and RL3, St. Joe's Corner. City and county of Yankton, South Dakota. Location south side of the 600 block of East Fourth Street. Deborah M. Specht and Daniel L. Specht, members of Mona's LLC owner. Again, you have, uh, information from staff, including a plat review. So, Mr. Mingo, what else? Is there anything else to add to this particular action item?
I don't think I have much to add, other than what's, uh, written in that action sheet. It's, uh, an area that you were involved in rezoning a month or so ago. Um, that interior plat is similar to what we do in townhome plats in, in residential developments is probably the nearest, uh, the nearest analogy I can use as to what that, uh, what that would be like, so staff recommends approval.
Okay, any comments or questions from the commission? So any public comment or any, uh, any YouTube comments?
There are no comments on YouTube on this item.
It appears we have no public comment in the meeting room.
All right, uh, is there a motion regarding this action item?
Motion approved by Mooney.
Healy, second. Motion by Mooney, second by Healy to approve the plat review. Action item number two, roll call, please.
Winandy.
Winandy, hi.
Winandy, hi. Syme.
Syme, hi.
Syme, hi. Erickson. Erickson, hi. Peterson.
Peterson, hi.
Peterson, hi. Healy.
Healy, hi.
Healy, hi. Uh, Pierre.
Pierre, hi.
Pierre, hi.
If that motion is passed, approving the plat review, uh, go to the city commission November 23rd, 2020 for a final decision.
Did we forget one person in that roll call, or, or was I just not paying attention? Did, did somebody get, like, overlooked?
Yes, Mooney did, and Mooney votes hi.
My apologies. Mooney, hi.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, that motion is still passed, and that action item or that plat review will go to the city commission on November 23rd, 2020. Moving on to action item number three, a plat review of a replat of Lot A of Lot 3, parcel 1 of Lot B of Lot 3, and Lot A of Lot 4, Whiting subdivision, city and county of Yankton, South Dakota, and a replat of Lot 5, East Industrial Park, city and county of Yankton, South Dakota. Hereafter to be known as Lots 1 and 2, Van Gertens Edition. hereafter to be known as lots 1 and 2, Van Gurpin's Edition, city and county of Yankton, South Dakota. Address 1705 Whiting Drive, Merrill W. Van Gurpin and Sandy Van Gurpin owners. Then you have an information, a plat review in your information packet with location map and survey plat. Dave, comments on this?
I do not really have any additional comments. There's a lot of history there, but I won't take up your time to talk about it because it doesn't really impact the plat so much as it does the surrounding land uses. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions or comments? Any public comments or YouTube, anything on YouTube?
There are no YouTube comments.
No public comments in the meeting room.
Is there a motion on this plat from the commission?
Can anyone make a motion to approve?
Motion by Brad Winandy, second by Warren Erickson to approve the plat. Roll call, please.
Mooney.
Mooney, aye.
Mooney, aye. Syme.
Syme, aye.
Syme, aye. Erickson. Erickson, aye. Peterson.
Peterson, aye.
Peterson, aye. Healy.
Healy, aye.
Healy, aye. Winandy.
Winandy, aye.
Winandy, aye. And Pierre.
Pierre, aye.
Pierre, aye.
The motion is passed. This plat review will go to the city commission for a final decision on November 23rd, 2020. All right, moving on to number four. Action item number four. The plat review of lots 1A, 2A, and 3A of Hagaman Edition in the northeast quarter of the northeast quarter and Government Lot 1 of Section 17, Township 93 North, Range 55 West of the 5th Prime Meridian, city and county of Yankton, South Dakota. Location, the west side of the 800 through 1,000 blocks of Bill Baggs Road, National Field Archery Association, Yankton Missouri River Campground LLC and Longbow LLP owners. Can you have a plat review from staff and a plat location map and a plat survey, I believe? So Dave, any other comments or additions?
The plat looks fairly complicated, but to simplify it as much as possible, this is sliding the east-west property lines slightly to better reflect essentially some vegetative cover on the site as much as anything. The other thing that I know many planning commissioners would be thinking a lot about is infrastructure obligation requirements associated with Bill Baggs Road as we move into the future and the community continues to grow that way. The original developer's agreement stipulated that what was previously Lot 3, and if this is approved, will now be, you know, be known as Lot 3A, carries the burden of that. And that will be tied to some, well, it's planned for archery business park area, but it will be tied to whatever the landowner, whatever type of development the landowner ends up with on that parcel at some point in time. But just wanted you to know that the infrastructure and Bill Baggs Road issues are addressed in an agreement that was approved as a part of a prior plat. With that, I'd try and answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions or comments on this plat?
So Dave, one question from my perspective on this. The property line between lots 2A and 3A, my understanding is that's essentially being shifted north. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So then, do you happen to know where the previous lot line was? The new lot line shows a 10-foot utility easement on either side of that property line where the original property line was? Would there have been an easement there as well? And are there utilities in that today? You're on mute.
You're?
Thank you. I was looking down at the map. Thank you. It's my understanding that all the utilities that are in the ground at this point are indicated on this map. That's a very good question also. And I would have to go back and look at the plat to see if there was an easement, but I imagine we would have required one at that point in time. If there's anything in that easement, it would be local, associated with the development to the south of it, which would now put it in that southern property with the utilization of the property that's there. If you're, if you want that answer, moving forward as this goes forward to the city commission, and you wanted to still take action on this tonight, you could take an action with that question in the action or a contingency in the action. And I can find that out before I end up in front of the city commission with this item.
Yeah, and I haven't checked, you know, thoroughly checked Northwestern's records, but I know we do have facilities in that vicinity at least. And I'm sure we could work with the owners to, you know, establish a new easement or just maintain the easement that may have been there if there was one there. But just something we might want to look into as this moves forward. So yeah, thank you.
Any other comments? Is there any comment from anyone in the commission room or any comments on YouTube?
There are no YouTube comments. And could I ask that anybody in the commission room at this time who wishes to speak to this item, please step to the podium.
No comments in the meeting room at this time.
Next. Is there a motion on this plat?
Yeah, this is Winandy. I would make a motion to approve, I guess, I don't know exactly how to phrase it, but some, was contingent upon the discovery of an easement along that existing property line or something to that effect, I guess.
Well, can we perhaps say that we would, that the motion is to approve, subject to locating any existing easements on the plat? And, look, determining what impact they have on the property development?
I think either of those versions of that language gets us to where we want to go before we go to the city commission. So I'm comfortable either way.
And I'm going to defer to Brad's motion.
If my motion is good enough to be where we need to go, that's, I'm good.
Somebody, please second that.
Second, Peterson.
All right, so Brad's made a motion to approve the plat. Lynn Peterson seconded it. Roll call, please.
Syme.
Syme, aye.
Syme, aye. Erickson. Erickson, aye. Peterson.
Peterson, aye.
Peterson, aye. Healy.
Healy, aye.
Healy, aye. Winandy.
Winandy, aye.
Winandy, aye. Mooney.
Mooney, aye.
Mooney, aye. And Pierre.
Pierre, aye.
Pierre, aye.
Okay, that motion is passed and this plat will go to the city commission on November 23rd, 2020 for a final decision. So we're, action item number five. The plat review of Lot 16, 17, 19, and 20, Whitetail Run in the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 16, Township 93 North, Range 56 West of the 5th Prime Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota, and a replat of Lot 7, hereafter to be known as Lot 6, Whitetail Run, in the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 16, Township 93 North, Range 56 West of the 5th Prime Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota. Location is the Whitetail Run Development on the west side of the 400 through 600 blocks of Deer Boulevard. Dennis L. Christensen, President, Deerfield Truck and Equipment Company owner. So you then have a plat review, a location map, and a survey plat in your information packet. Dave, further comments on this particular plat?
Not too many comments. This is part of a prior development plan that the planning commission and city commission have seen over the last 10 years or so now. As I've stated in the past, we have limited authority in this area. Our authority has to do with attempting to protect the extension of our street grid if it does ever extend this far. And we can do that in two manners. We can either do that by requiring right-of-way lines on sixteenth lines, section lines, and quarter lines, which we do in more rural locations, or in a little bit more developed locations like this we work with, accepting what the developers have proposed as long as we don't see some potential for a major conflict if they're not along one of those other three types of lines. We do not have the ability to apply the full extent of our subdivision ordinance in this location because it's not in or adjacent to the corporate limits. And staff would recommend approval of this plat and those same comments would apply to the next one.
So are there any comments from the commission? Any public comments or any YouTube comments?
There are no YouTube comments. If anybody is in the audience at the meeting room wishing to speak to this item, would you please step to the podium now?
No comments in the meeting room at this time.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion regarding this plat?
That was a motion by Erickson. Winandy, second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the plat review. Roll call, please.
Erickson. Erickson, aye. Peterson.
Peterson, aye.
Peterson, aye. Healy.
Healy, aye.
Healy, aye. Winandy.
Winandy, aye.
Winandy, aye. Mooney.
Mooney, aye.
Mooney, aye. Syme.
Syme, aye.
Syme, aye. And Pierre.
Pierre, aye.
Pierre, aye.
Motion is passed on that plat. It'll go to the city commission on November 23rd, 2020 for a final decision. Now we'll move on to action item number six. A plat review of Lot 18, Whitetail Run in the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 16, Township 93 North, Range 56 West of the 5th Prime Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota. The location, Whitetail Run Development on the west side of the 400 block of Deer Boulevard. Dennis L. Christensen, President, Deerfield Truck and Equipment Company owner. Then you have a plat review, a location map, and a survey plat in your packet. I know, Dave, you said your comments from the previous one applied to this, but is there really anything different? This looks like the same area, it just came in at two different times or something like that?
Yeah, I'm not quite sure I know the exact logic of the separate plats. They could have all been on one, but I'm guessing it was a timing issue as far as either the surveyor's schedule or something with, that the owners was, were working toward.
Any comments from the commission on this plat review? Okay, hearing none. Is there any public comment or any YouTube comments?
There are no YouTube comments. If there's anybody in the meeting room that wishes to address this item, please step to the podium.
We have no comments in the meeting room at this time.
Syme moves to approve the plat.
Healy, second. There were a motion by Syme, a second by Healy to approve the plat. Roll call, please.
Peterson.
Peterson, aye.
Peterson, aye. Healy.
Healy, aye.
Healy, aye. Winandy.
Winandy, aye.
Winandy, aye. Mooney.
Mooney, aye.
Mooney, aye. Syme.
Syme, aye.
Syme, aye. Erickson. Erickson, aye. And Pierre.
Pierre, aye.
Pierre, aye.
That motion is passed and that plat will go to the city commission on November 23rd, 2020 for a final decision. Okay, we're down to other business. The October 2020 building permit report. Dave, any further comments on this?
I can just say, 2020 is actually very, very strong. We're well above our 10-year average on housing units. And we are also ahead of last year's pace if you take out the permit for the Mount Marty College Field House as far as permit valuation is concerned. Obviously, every permit counts, but once in a while in a year when you get one big one like that, that was over $10 million, it's interesting to compare year to year with, you know, with just kind of the smaller, more normal permits. And I'd happy to try and, be happy to try and answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none. We are through our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to adjourn. Roll call, please.
Healy.
Healy, aye.
Healy, aye. Winandy.
Winandy, aye.
Winandy, aye. Mooney.
Mooney, aye.
Mooney, aye. Syme.
Syme, aye.
Syme, aye. Erickson. Erickson, aye. Peterson.
Peterson, aye.
Peterson, aye. And Pierre.
Pierre, aye.
Pierre, aye.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned. We'll see you in December.